I thought Kenny had more than last I saw him.
I mean, like I said, I had talked to Jimmy.
Jeremy's, Jeremy's, I met him, I talked to him the other day. I've talked to both of them, Pfizer.
Pfizer.
Jeremy came to the house, Kenny came to the house, Jeremy's came to the house about two or three times.
I think Kenny said he was going to call me, I said, just get me through and he wanted me after I had one of the surgeries, he called me soon.
I don't know if he want, he ain't working, it don't seem like in our area. But I, I think he's working in West Haven area pretty hard. Well, he went, he came to Fairview one Saturday and he went over and talked to Sullivan and people like that. He went to Margaret Jones's funeral, he knows all, Jay Rick's mom, he knows all them. And Ken Robinson is on his committee. Yeah, Ken and Ken and Dally. Can you name him? Ken is on one of his committees. And he's got everybody on the county commission on his committee. Tell me, I'm staying up. I feel like, I feel like I'm a coach.
Well, yeah, I feel like I'm a coach.
I'd worry with the both, but the thing that's bothering me is it looks like the same Fairview's all in on Jeremy, except Stewart's planning cool, but I know Kathy Carroll is hurting us. I know his daddy and mama go to church with him, he's a favorite church of ours. And I think when that gets, and I know we've got a member at our church, Mr. Anderson's brother, he's been like everybody in Fairview about, in Fairview church class, and I think there's not several other people. And there's something, I didn't get this before, Jeremy's got her. Kenny, Kenny got one phone survey, they started calling the house and asking all these questions, abortion here, things, Kenny, he couldn't. And that survey said, would you be able to have a post out of the book for a candidate if you found out that you seen a rescue? And I said, I'm through with this survey. Then I met Anna, but Jeremy, Jeremy, I'm saying, he got this. Destroying someone's girlfriend's property, which he's just accomplished.
First order of business is invocation for Commissioner Dwight Jones and to pledge Commissioner Tommy Little. Please stand.
About to conduct this meeting, just allow us to do what's right in your eyes. Thanks for giving us this great country, to be able to, you know, come to you and ask for guidance on business. Thanks for giving us this great county. Just be with all of us and do what's mindful in your eyes. Just name, amen.
Thank thee divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother for which you stand, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is roll call. If you're present, push your yes button. Do we have to confirm?
And confirm.
We have all, heard from all three of those commissioners and hope to see them next month. Next item's approval of minutes, and I believe they were included in your packet. Regular county commission meeting, May 14th, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, the motion, Commissioner Little the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Twenty-four, one abstention. Next item's introduction and acceptance of the highway commission minutes. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hayes, Mr. Jones the second. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? I see none, you're ready to vote. All in favor of the highway commission minutes, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they passed unanimously. Citizens communication, we don't have any citizens communication. Moving on to communications and messages, we have two late file resolutions tonight. One's in your packet, resolution six twelve twenty. And if there's no objections, we'll hear that in order, it is on your agenda and in your packet. Any objections to hearing six twelve twenty? I see none. And then, resolution six twelve twenty-one's another late file, we would hear that right after twenty in appropriations, if there's no objections to that. I see none, so we'll, we'll, two late files, six twelve twenty and six twelve twenty-one. Next we'll call on Mayor Anderson.
If I could, I'd like to ask Mac Purdy to step up. Many of you have in your package, this is amateur radio week, and we have with us tonight also our WE cares Williamson County, WE cares director, and I'll let Mac introduce him, and then I'd like to read a proclamation. Mac?
We have the emergency coordinator, Gary Headon, with Williamson County Amateur Radio and Emergency Services, and they're a great community partner for us with over 200 amateur radio volunteers in Williamson County and provide a great service to the county and the citizens.
You're adults with me while I read this, declaring the June 17th through the 23rd as amateur radio week in Williamson County. And as I read this, I ask you to reflect back two years ago when we had the flood, and just how important this organization was to us as well as so many of the others. Whereas more than 250 federally licensed amateur radio operators who reside in Williamson County are registered members of the Williamson County Amateur Radio Emergency Service, known as WE cares. And whereas the members of the WE cares have consistently demonstrated their commitment to public service by willingly volunteering their individual time and utilizing their personal radio equipment at no cost for the benefit of the citizens of Williamson County in order to provide a source of reliable radio communication support during natural disasters or other public emergency situation. And whereas in addition to their regular participation in local emergency communication training exercise, Williamson County amateur radio operators actively participate in an annual nationwide field day communication exercise sponsored by the American Radio Relay League, the National Association for Amateur Radios. And whereas the field exercise for 2012 will be, will be taking place on June 23rd to the 24th, it's by my signature that we call this amateur radio week here in June 17th through the 23rd of this year. Jack signed it and I have signed it, and we are so glad and tickled that we have those men and women in this community that are willing to sacrifice their time and their own, their own dollars and cents in buying their equipment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a unique arrangement between the county and our group, and I'm really appreciative of the support of the county as well. This pretty well says it, so we're glad to be a part of it.
Next we have reports of county offices. Mayor?
I could have David Coleman come up and kind of give you a snapshot of the last month's activity.
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of items tonight that are not our normal report. You saw these about two months ago when we did the refinancing of the hospital bonds were now required by the state to submit to you or port on debt obligations every time we sell bonds. If you recall, this body approved about $6.7 million for school capital a couple of months ago, and we decided this time we were not ready to go out for a long-term bond issue, so we have done this on a short term, no less than six months, no longer than 18 months. And we feel like then we'll be able to take that into a full bond issue. So we bid out these two items, one of them you'll see is the county district school bonds, which is actually the old rural debt. Franklin Synergy Bank bid on $2,690,000 at a rate of .45 percent. And that's an excellent rate. And the second one is on the general obligation school bonds, the bid was from U.S. Bank of 1.375. So we submit those to you, and after the meeting tonight, we will sign and date those and get them to the state tomorrow. But we're very happy with the outcome of those, those bids. The regular items that we normally submit to you, the Cool Springs Conference Center, we actually have two reports the month of April. We received a check of $21,600. We just received the May report today, we'll receive another check of $28,778. So we continue to have good results from the Cool Springs Conference Center this spring. The privilege tax report for the month of May, again, shows an upswing for the last several months. It's the highest May report in the last five years, and so we're happy to report that and hope that we continue to see that improvement. The budget report that we submit to you each month, we sent the April report out to you either by email or hard copy, and there's nothing changed on that. But the May report, just because of the date of the meeting, we just didn't have enough time to get that one ready tonight, so we will be emailing the May report or mailing out to you hopefully by the end of the week. So, Mr. Chairman, if any questions, I'll be glad to take those.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mr. Downer?
Cheryl and I is constituent, Mr. Lawrence, on the, the health savings. I just have a favor to ask, if we could next month get another update on what our savings is from that insurance.
Sure. Anybody else? I see none. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I've got three things that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, thanks to the budget committee and their hard work and diligence. If we had the time to put it all together, we could have voted on it tonight. We're finished. And that's a tip of the hat to Tom Bane and many of the others that worked on it. Also likewise to the schools, I've said this several times, they came in with their numbers solid, and I appreciate that very much on Dr. Looney and the school board chairman, Pat Anderson. So you should have a, there'll be some last minute tweaking, there always is in this month, but for all intent purposes, the budget is, will be presented, the budget will be presented to you in July at the nine o'clock date that we have, the second Monday in July. Second of all, for the last several months, a few of you have been asking me, when we refinanced the hospital bonds, we were able to accumulate a savings of about one point, nearly $1.7 million. And several of you have asked, what would the hospital do in that refinancing? And so on behalf of your chairman, Jack Walton, and Bert Chalafont, and Cheryl Wilson, am I forgetting anybody? That the county commissioners that serve on that, the board has voted to refund to the hospital in a way of working through public safety, through our ambulances, purchasing a couple of ambulances and putting some other money to the tune of $1.1 million, they'll be returning back to the county. So that's a, it's very notable on their part to be able to do that, and we'll plow that back into our safety programs and our rescues and our, and our, and our programs throughout our county and to serve all of our county. And finally, it's with mixed emotions that I have to tell you that we're losing. One of the key people over the, my career, I started in 1986 as a county commissioner, and shortly thereafter, there was a, a man that came on board and he has really steered the ship for us over the last year or years, and that's David Coleman. He's decided to retire. And we're going to miss him. He gave me his notice a couple of weeks ago. He's going to be working through the end of August. If we can keep him off the lake fishing between then and then, I know that we are glad to see him reach that point in his life that we all someday aspire to, and he wants to spend some time with his family, and I don't blame him for that. But he'll be dearly missed. He's been an important cog in making government work here in Williamson County. It's just been a joy to work with him. Tomorrow morning, we will post the job, he knows that too. And I hope and pray and wish him the best of luck over the next years, that he has to enjoy fishing and playing with his grandchildren. What a joy he has been. David?
Thank you.
Now, he's still got to work the July meeting. He's going to tell you he doesn't, but he does.
I wasn't really prepared to say anything, and I wasn't sure if I could, but it's been enjoyable. We, I put in my letter to Rogers that there were two major events this summer. July the 6th, right before our county commission meeting, I'll be Medicare eligible. And August the 14th will be my 17th year anniversary. One thing I didn't put in his letter, is another important event this summer, is my wife and I had her 45th anniversary yesterday, so I'm sure she'd want me to put that in there. But it has been a pleasure, it was a hard move to make when I moved to come here, but I've never regretted it. It's been a great time together. I've worked for three great county mayors, county executives, Bob Rang, Clint Callicott, and Rogers. I put in my letter that they taught me a lot about life, people, and politics. But it has been a great time. I've been blessed with a wonderful staff that makes me look good, very confident of their ability to carry on and do a job for you and for the citizens and for the mayor. And if there's anything, I know this sounds trite, but if there's anything I can do for you personally or for this commission, I'll be glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Coleman. Next we have Dr. Mike Looney, Williamson County Schools.
Good evening, David. That's not good news for us, but I do wish you lots of success. Do have a couple items to report. First, I'd like to thank the city of Fairview for using some of their adequate facilities, tax money, school adequate facility tax money to buy computers in the Fairview schools. They spent $81,000, which is a huge, huge move forward for the city of Fairview and for the schools in Fairview. I'd also like to make you aware of the fact that the SCORE organization for the state of Tennessee has published its report on teacher evaluations that was made public today at two o'clock, and so hopefully we're going to be getting some adjustments in the teacher evaluation process in the next legislative session. I'll speak very briefly on test scores. While the data is embargoed, I do feel very free to say that the test scores are as high as they ever have been in this district, and the teachers have exceeded my expectations this past academic year. You do have a significant resolution before you tonight, and I do encourage you to consider that thoughtfully, as this continues to grow our need for new schools to house the many new families that are moving to Williamson County is real and significant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or committee reports at this time? I see none. Moving on to elections and appointments. The first, first one we have is disciplinary review board, filling an unexpired term, the nomination Deborah Rogers, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, second, Dwight Jones. Also want to bring to your attention, we have a typographical era. It's a two-year term expiring 5/14 instead of 6/14. So it will expire in May 2014. Commissioner Hayes?
It wasn't about this. I had pushed, pushed the request to speak back when you asked for reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I go ahead and, what I was going to, was just remind people that in response to what the commission asks the planning commission to do to look at the, the hamlets and for our, our long-range plan, there are two public hearings planned Tuesday, June 19th at Hillsborough Elementary Middle School at 6:30, and Thursday, June 21st, Page Middle School. Notice is going out to the property owners and those adjacent, but I did want for public information, let that be known and encourage people to come. The planning commission is doing exactly what we ask them to do and the planning staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. So back to what's at hand, we have a nomination, Deborah Rogers. Any other nominees? I see none. All in favor of Deborah Rogers, signify by saying aye. Opposed? She is confirmed. Hospital Board of Trustees at Large Representative, term expiring Bo Butler, nomination Bo Butler. Mr. Chalafont, Mr. Bethard the second, all in favor of Bo Butler, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Period Districts one and nine representative, term expiring Brown Daniel, nomination Brown Daniel. Mr. Chalafont, are there any other nominations? Judy Hayes the second. I see none. All in favor of Brown Daniel, signify by saying aye. Brown Daniel's confirmed. Independent Audit Committee, three-year term expiring June 2015, term expiring Patty Parsons, nomination Patty Parsons. Mr. Barnwell, Commissioner Hayes the second, any other nominations? All in favor of Patty Parsons, signify by saying aye. Opposed? She is confirmed. Juvenile Court Judge begins January 1st, 2013, serves until election August 2014. This is a new position, nomination Sharon Guffey. Commissioner Smith, the second, Commissioner Bane the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Sharon Guffey, signify by saying aye. Judge, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you. I think most of you know how privileged I feel to work in juvenile court and to work for this county. I have a lot of people here tonight, and if you'll indulge me for just a minute, I'd like to recognize a couple. One is Charlie Ray Smith, and if you would stand up please, Charlie Ray. Many of you know Charlie Ray Smith, but as of July 22nd, he will have worked for Williamson County for 37 years. Pretty impressive, and as most of our staff, both in the clerk's office, juvenile court clerk's office, and juvenile services, they have worked there for a long, long time. Betsy Agent has worked for the county for 36 years in our court. Brenda Hayden, our elected juvenile court clerk, has worked there for 28 years, elected for 20. Terry Bennett and Leslie Shelton, who are also here, have worked there for 26 years. And we have many people that have worked in our court and in the clerk's office for over 15 years. Zanny Martin, Daisy Gardner, Margaret Gurley of Virginia Davis, Lisa Raines, Amory Campbell. So we, we've been around for a long time, and, and these folks have gotten very little to no recognition over the years, and every day that I come to work, they greet me with a smile, no matter what's happened the day before, which a lot of times has been grueling, they're ready to start back up the next day. So I thank you, and we thank you for an exciting opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library Board of Trustees, three-year term expiring June 2015, term expiring Betty Friedlander, Friedlander, nomination Betty Friedlander. Mr. Barnwell, Commissioner Little the second, all in favor of Ms. Friedlander, signify by saying aye. She's confirmed. Term expiring Jerry Bull, nomination Jerry Bull. Mr. Jones, the motion, Commissioner Jones, the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Jerry Bull, signify by saying aye. He is confirmed. Library Board of Trustees, regional, three-year terms expiring June 2015, term expiring Jerry Bull, nomination Jerry Bull. Mr. Jones, Mr. Barnwell the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Jerry Bull, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Mr. Bull is confirmed. Gilbert Bossy Jr., term expiring, nomination Gilbert Bossy. Mr. Cook, Mr. Bane the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Gilbert Bossy, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And he is confirmed. Moving on to consent agenda, if there's anything on there that anybody would like to hear separately, let me know. If not, we'll hear the consent agenda as a whole, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Jones the second. Is that loaded? Okay. Is that it? Oh, no problem. Oh, no problem. We are ready. Okay. The consent agenda would.
My software diagnostic abilities tell me it thinks there's only four up here that thinks we need, so definitely not four. When we were pushing present earlier, wasn't recording everybody. So it looks like we need to start to print that whole process over again. Because there's only four up as present up there. Yeah, we need to do. We need to do a little.
Okay, everybody press your present button and you confirm. Large blue one. Mr. Ford, you're hired.
If I roll out the county, too.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and voice vote on the consent agenda. All in favor is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent passes.
Need to take a little break.
Oh, okay. Next item's unfinished business. A year ago, this body established the Commissioners Internet Forum, and in that resolution, we all decided that we revisit that in a year. That time has come, so I wanted to open it up and see kind of what your thoughts were, if you wanted to continue that or time to end that. So I don't know if your request to speak button does, but if you'll signify raising your hand or something, I'll call on you. Mr. Barnwell?
Yeah, I'd like to give you an update on the resolution we passed out in Paris and the Florida Department of National Defense. In that voting, we're sure this is back in the last year. So I would recommend we continue with the campaign. Next year, will you make a break? We will be following the limits of here. Those three sections, we have a chance to.
If law, then it may not be necessary to have the forum, but for another year, I think we should continue with the forum.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Cook?
How many of the commissioners used it?
Uh.
Can we see a show of hands or something? Three people. Four?
Okay. Commissioner Danner?
I'd like to see us keep it at least one more year for the reasons that Bob cited, but also just because it doesn't cost us anything to keep it up, and I'd hate to lose the costs that we put into setting it up. It doesn't, if people still don't want to participate, that's your option, but for those of us that do, I think it doesn't cost us anything, we should just keep it up for one more year.
Commissioner Bethard?
Just to echo what both Commissioner Danner and Commissioner Barnwell said, I too would like to see it continue and moreover, would add to that, that I would encourage people to use it more. It is a tool that is only as good as what we put into it, and I think if we utilized more, commissioners and the citizenry would get more out of it.
Anybody else? So if we decide tonight to do away with it, or I guess we would have no further action if we continued it, if we did away with it, we'd have to bring forth a resolution next month to cancel it. So just, I mean, what I'm hearing from everybody is to keep it another year. I don't think it was, we had a lot of response and a lot of input with it, but it's there. So we'll do whatever this body would like to do. Commissioner Wilson?
I just want, can Bobby come up? Bobby, I think our attorney, Bobby Cook, had had an issue where recently, it would probably have been better to discuss something on this forum type. Can you kind of address that for us, if you don't mind?
The issue I dealt with, public business that was going back and forth, and it had not gotten to the degree of being deliberation, which if you guys could get their writing and it was by email, you guys would get it to that violation of the law. The emails had not quite reached that. However, when I became aware of it, I thought if you guys would get, well, not you all, or disciplines in the emails, we're getting real close to deliberating. So I sent out a last email that says that.
Discussion should be held on the, on the public forum that you all have. Any additional questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions? Mr. Cook? I see none. I'll entertain a motion from someone, I guess we'll vote it. If we'll do a voice vote, if, if we vote to do away with it, we would have to bring it up next month through a resolution and do that, is my understanding. So, yeah, so we, I'd either entertain a motion to keep it or to bring a resolution forward.
We'll make a motion to keep it for another year.
All right. motion. Commissioner Danner's the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With a no, give me a show of hands. One, two, three. Four. All right. And we'll, looks like we'll keep it another year. So move it on to new business. Commissioner Langston?
No, sir.
We're ready? Resolution six twelve one, resolution directing revenue designated for road purposes that is collected from the Williamson County business tax that exceeded three million four hundred thousand dollars and funds collected from the Williamson County wheel tax that exceed three million five hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand eleven, twelve, be re-designated to the general fund. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little, the second, Highway Commission, do anybody have that? I'm sure that was five, five to zero. Tax Study Committee?
Three, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
County fund balance from the motor vehicle tax, if it exceeds three point five million, it will go back into the fund balance. Last year, the business tax returned six hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The motor vehicle tax returned two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for net between the two of them of eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, which is substantial. I would appreciate anyone supporting.
Hey, John, pull your mic down towards you, we're having trouble here. Can we touch it? Any questions about resolution six twelve one? I see none. We're ready to vote. All in favor of resolution six twelve one, signify by pushing your yes button. Let's take about a five-minute recess, and we'll get to technical difficulties.[1338.12] Let's take about a five-minute recess and we'll get to technical difficulties. You want me to go ahead and get a roll call again? If, if everyone would push your present button again, which is the green button, and then confirm. We're going to try the machine one more time. Commissioner Hayes, did you wish to speak? Commissioner Hayes?
Yeah, I pushed it, but it gets it presently.
Okay. Did you want to speak?
You're pushing your speak button instead of...
Okay.
And then confirm.
We got a motion in second on Resolution six, twelve, one, so we're ready to vote. We think.
Hold on, don't anybody push your button. Are you ready?
All right, we're ready.
Ricky Jones is showing a little pride.
No. Okay. If you're in favor of Resolution six, twelve, one, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Ricky, what, would you state your vote?
State your, state your vote for the record.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Resolution passes. We're going to park the machine for the rest of the night. Okay. Resolution number six, twelve, seven, resolution appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars through an inner category adjustment in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve general purpose school operating budget for workman compensation. Mr. Jones, motion, Commissioner Barnwell the second. School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is workman's compensations cost exceeded budget and through inner category adjustment, they needed to move some money to cover the funds.
Any questions? I see none. Mr. Mosley tells me we've got to do a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson, would you call the roll? Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number six, twelve, eight, resolution amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve general purpose school budget, eighty thousand dollars for certain expenses from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is an unanticipated expense dealing with some contracted services that needed to come from fund balance.
All right. Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution appropriating fifty-one thousand dollars additional dollars from the general purpose school fund unappropriated fund balance for SRO officers.
Move for approval.
Mr. Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Any questions? I see none. All in, well, excuse me. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve general purpose school budget, eighty thousand dollars for certain expenses from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is an unanticipated expense dealing with some contracted services that needed to come from fund balance.
All right. Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
twelve general purpose school budget, eighty thousand dollars for certain expenses from
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
unappropriated fund balance.
Yes.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Ryan?
Commissioner Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Education Committee?
Yes.
Six, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Williams?
Budget Committee?
Yes.
Five, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Wilson?
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
This is an unanticipated expense dealing with some contracted services that needed
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution appropriating fifty-one thousand dollars additional
to come from fund balance.
All right. Any questions? I see none. Jeff? dollars from the general purpose school fund unappropriated fund balance for SRO officers.
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Mr. Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Education Committee?
Yes.
Six, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Danner?
Budget Committee?
Yes.
Five, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Davis?
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Any questions?
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
I see none.
Yes.
All in, well, excuse me.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Jeff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bain? Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution appropriating fifty-one thousand dollars additional
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
dollars from the general purpose school fund unappropriated fund balance for SRO officers.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Yes.
Mr. Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Any questions? I see none. All in, well, excuse me. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number six, twelve, eight, resolution amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve general purpose school budget, eighty thousand dollars for certain expenses from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is an unanticipated expense dealing with some contracted services that needed to come from fund balance.
All right. Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, nine, resolution appropriating fifty-one thousand dollars additional dollars from the general purpose school fund unappropriated fund balance for SRO officers.
Move for approval.
Mr. Little the second, School Board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Any questions? I see none. All in, well, excuse me. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, ten, resolution appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the central cafeteria fund for food costs. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Mr. Langston the second, School Board, voted twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
There's been an increased cost in produce and in the central cafeteria fund. This is a self-sustaining fund and this is money needed to cover that cost of produce.
Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six, twelve, ten, resolution appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the central cafeteria fund for food costs. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Mr. Langston the second, School Board, voted twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Any questions? I see none. All in, well, excuse me. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number six, twelve, eight, resolution amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve general purpose school budget, eighty thousand dollars for certain expenses from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
If you're in favor of Resolution 612, one, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Ricky, what would you state your vote?
State your vote for the record.
Yes.
Resolution passes. We're gonna park the machine for the rest of the night. Okay. Resolution number 612 seven, resolution appropriating $350,000 through an intercategory adjustment in the 2011-2012 general purpose school operating budget for workman compensation. Mr. Jones, motion, Commissioner Barnwell the second, School Board, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
This is workman's compensations cost exceeded budget and through intercategory adjustment, they needed to move some money to cover the funds.
Any questions? I see none. Mr. Mosley tells me we gotta do a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson, would you call the roll? Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number 612 eight, resolution amending the 2011-2012 general purpose school budget, $80,000 for certain expenses from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second, School Board, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
This is an unanticipated expense dealing with some contracted services that needed to come from fund balance.
All right, any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 nine, resolution appropriating $51,000 additional dollars from the general purpose school fund unappropriated fund balance for SRO officers.
Move for approval.
Mr. Little the second, School Board, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
This is where the state has continued to decrease the funding for our SROs and this is to keep and maintain the number of SROs we have in our schools.
Any questions? I see none, all in foot, well, excuse me. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Wilson?
Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 ten, resolution appropriating $350,000 from the central cafeteria fund for food costs. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Mr. Langston the second, School Board voted 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
There's been an increased cost in produce and in the central cafeteria fund. This is a self-sustaining fund and this is money needed to cover that cost of produce.
Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Will- Williams? Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry. Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 eleven, resolution appropriating in the central cafeteria 2011-12 budget, $850,000 for USDA commodities.
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones? Commissioner Barnwell the second, School Board voted 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
This is where the federal government gives us commodities and the state is now requiring that we show a dollar amount, I guess, of what the federal government gives us each year.
Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 twelve, resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund for $1 million for land. Mr. Jones?
Move for approval.
Mr. Barnwell the second, School Board voted 11, yes, one, no. Education Committee?
Six, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
This is where we had said before that the land wasn't to exceed 30,000 acre, but they found some land in this area and with the additional purchase of 25 additional acres, they're going to need, I think, additional $1 million and they want us to fund this. If you need to talk to Dr. Looney or if any questions, Dr. Looney's here to answer any of those questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Lo?
I'd like to offer an amendment. I move to amend the resolution as follows, to state that the additional $1 million needed to purchase the additional 25 acres will be derived from the general purpose school fund balance at $250,000 each year for the next four years.
Second.
I'll promote it, Commissioner Bain the second. Any discussion on the amendment?
This is essentially what was talked about in the Budget Committee as to how it would be funded and I think this is just a formalization of what the agreement was.
All right. We're ready to vote on the amendment. Jeff?
Okay. Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones? Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
All right. The amendment passes. We're back to the Resolution 612 twelve as amended. Any discussion on that? Mr. Danner? Dr. Looney?
In the Budget Committee, I understood that you kind of described this resolution tonight, this extra million would be for that extra 25 acres to, in sometime in the next four years, build either an elementary school or a middle school. And my question is, if you build an elementary and not a middle school, what two middle schools will feed into this new high school? It's a difficult question to answer, Ms. Danner, because the fact is that we need additional capacity at the elementary and the middle school level. So I do not see that we'll be able to populate the new high school unless we add middle school capacity, either at Sunset or via a new middle school. So I think the solution has to be adding capacity at both levels. What that looks like on the ground yet, the Board has not decided and frankly, we haven't had those discussions yet. But I can, I feel very comfortable in saying that we have a capacity issue at both the elementary and middle school level. So we'll be coming forward with plans over the course of the next year or so with how we will populate the new high school. And as you know, we have not requested funding for the new high school yet. This is the property purchase. The way, if you look at the enrollment projections at Ravenwood, which is where most of the students I'm surmising would come from, we basically have a U-shaped enrollment projection because of the rezoning that occurred. We don't really see the benefit of the rezoning until next school year and the year after when grandfathering dissipates. And so it's that third year where we'll see that enrollment start declines, to incline significantly, which is where we'll get the squeeze back on Ravenwood High School, or I should say more of a squeeze than they currently have. And just by way of information, I spent the weekend in preparation for tonight's meeting traveling the split log corridor, as I'll call it, and the number of housing starts that are out there are absolutely incredible. And I'm really concerned that our timeline might be too conservative moving forward based on what I see on the ground with construction. I hope that answers your question. Well, and I would just say thank you and I know you haven't decided and I know that's going to be some tricky waters for the Board to figure out. But before, I know, speaking for myself, and I would hope that other taxpayers would ask the same of their commissioners, before I could vote to on the intent to fund for that high school, I think we would need to know what middle schools were going to feed into it because there are many that are concerned that we would have three high schools that would be half-full. And nobody wants to repeat what's going on at Summit. And we'd like to see that you wouldn't have a half-empty Ravenwood and a half-empty Northeast High School. So I would like to, I'd ask you to ask your Board to supply that information before you ask for the intent to fund. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Coleman or the Mayor in regards to funding for the additional $1 million?
Whatever you say, it's not going to be around for six days.
I might enjoy this next six days.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Mr. Coleman, the question I have is, my understanding is that we're, we need to come up with an additional $1 million, essentially. I understand the 250,000 that we voted in the amendment, but we still have another million. I certainly believe that we need this school in the Nolansville area, very much support the campus idea, but my concern is taking out additional debt. Is there, is that what we, what the plan is or is there other plans that we have in terms of funding this additional $1 million?
Let me just clarify, we're talking about $2 million items. One million dollar item is what Dr. Looney is asking for tonight and my understanding with this amendment is that would come from their fund balance over four years. The other $1 million is what you agreed a couple of months ago for the three million, the two of those, two million of that would come from the leftover Summit money and that the county would put in another $1 million.
Okay. So this resolution specifically deals with the 250,000 now?
Right. That's not discussing borrowing tonight, but at some point, we'll have to come up with our $1 million that we agreed to a couple of months ago and there are two, three avenues that we can do that and we think we might be able to do that without borrowing that money.
But this resolution does not address that. We'll be doing that another night. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? We're voting on 612 12 as amended. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain? Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont? Commissioner Cook?
Commissioner Danner?
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones? Commissioner Ricky Jones? Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 13, resolution amending the 2011-2012 highway department and capital projects budgets to appropriate up to $200,000 for purchase of a dirt loader for the department. Revenue is to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Hancock? Blue for approval. Commissioner Jones? Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, this is a dirt loader that will be replacing a dirt loader that's 12 years old and it just cannot get parts for it. It's been out of service for about, often on for about six weeks and parts cannot be located. It's an almost have-to-have piece of equipment. You start cleaning out ditches and those kind of things.
Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? Resolution 612 13, Jeff?
Commissioner Bain? Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont? Commissioner Cook? Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones? Commissioner Ricky Jones? Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 14, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Parks and Recreation budget by $50,000. Revenue is to come from participant fees. Commissioner Bain?
Move for approval.
Mr. Wilson the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
That was Lou, yeah.
Okay. Four, zero. Okay, all right. Budget Committee?
Five, zero.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
This is money for the Parks and Rec, revenue is to come from participant fees.
All right. Any questions? I see none. Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook? Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones? Commissioner Ricky Jones? Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 15, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Sheriff's Department budget and accepting a donation of $50,000 from the Martin Foundation for equipment, uniforms, and training. Commissioner Williams? Mr. Hancock the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
That was seven, zero, I believe.
All right. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a $50,000 donation from the Martin Foundation, the sheriff represented to the law enforcement committee that it's going to be divided between the Reserve Division and tactical equipment. They're going to be in the Reserve Division, they're going to be buying bulletproof vests for the reserve deputies, which they've been having to pay for themselves out of their own pocket.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? 612 15, Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beathard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 17, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-2012 capital projects budget for public transportation commuter van replacement purchases budget by $527,000. Revenue is to come from federal transit funding through the state grant. Commissioner Bain?
Move for approval.
Mr. Langston the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Yes, this is federal money that's passing through a state grant through us and it's for van purchase.
Any questions? I see none. Ready to vote? 612 17, Jeff?
Commissioner Bain?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Beathard?
Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Danner? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Hawkins? Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Herbert? Commissioner Dwight Jones? Commissioner Ricky Jones? Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Wilson? Twenty-one, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 612 18, resolution appropriating the purchase of a financial and human resource software system and related transfers in the 2011-12 capital projects fund. Revenue is to come from existing bond funds. I also want to make note in the 1234th, whereas, yeah, that number is correct. Down below, it's a typographical error. We've got $1,074 in the transfer from and transfer to, that should be $1,073,000. So everybody make that correction. Okay. Commissioner Bain?
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Yes, this is long overdue software package that will incorporate a number of departments, budgeting, accounting, purchasing, payroll, HR, et cetera. It's been a number of years, probably close to 15, since this has been updated.
Any questions? Mr. Danner?
I did ask David Coleman if this new software would make it easier in the future to have the checkbook online and he did ask the company and am I putting words in your mouth, sir? They said yes. Okay, good. One day, you'll see a resolution from me on that.
Any other discussion?